Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez is not, has not arrived yet. A councilmember Ibarra is running late. Mayor Protem?
Here.
Councilmember Charette?
Here.
Councilmember Canas?
Here.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Here.
Mayor Tran?
Here. Moving on to public comments for closed session. Madam City Clerk, do we have any comments?
Yes, we do have comments for closed session.
Thank you.
Dolores Armstead. John Schollenberger. Kimberly Calvin. Christian Shaughnessy. Luis Ojeda. Eric Marquez.
Please state your name. You may begin. Thank you.
Dolores Armstead. Good evening. I am here tonight to support councilmember Ortiz. What is in the claim is not new information. Anyone that was around for the 7th ward election is well aware of what happened. Chief Goodman had confirmed that councilmember, Treasurer Ortiz, had been run, her campaign had been run just like she was told. It's sad that this is happening right now, but this is necessary so that we can make sure that those who broke the law are held accountable and our residents are safe from wrongdoing, or try to keep them safe. Councilmember Ortiz, thank you for doing this. We know it's hard to continue to be a target, but that is what makes you a true leader in San Bernardino and a hometown hero. Next, the corruption of the 1st through 5th ward is further exemplified by your underhanded meeting to choose another city manager. I'm sure you are reviewing the applications, but city managers should be reviewed and hired by all the councilpeople and the mayor, not just the hidden few. You need to restart the recruiting process. This one has been corrupted. Just 1 through 5 showed up. No mayor, no 5th, no 6th. San Bernardino will again be posted as the most dirty and corrupt city in the state because of wards 1 through 5. Primarily due because of wards 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. The mayor was not involved in this one or the 5th or 6th ward. Oh, and how's the recalls coming? Interesting.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, everybody, ladies and gentlemen, our mayor, members of the council, members of the public. My name is Christian Sabrano Thomas Shaughnessy. It's a pleasure to be here today. At the current moment, I've come here to speak with regards to the second item on the closed session agenda. As somebody that works with victims of domestic violence almost every single day at my work, we need to live in a society where if you are in danger, you need to feel comfortable calling the police without having the expectation, without having the possibility that 20, 30, 40 years down the line, a misunderstanding what happened to you could be used against you for the rest of your life. We need to have justice in this city. We need to have it made clear that no matter if you're wearing a uniform, if you're not wearing a uniform, though no matter high or low you are in this society, that you need to have equality under the law. Inappropriately using the CLEET system as an act of political practice is something that is unbecoming of civic and moral virtue. And I would urge each and every single one of you. You may not like Treasurer, you may not like the mayor, you may not like me, you may not like other people, but take a very firm and sober look at the facts in this case. Many more facts will be coming. Many specific claims have been made. And I want to end off by saying that last year, there is a reason why the SBPOA withdrew their endorsement of Jim Pennman. There was a very good reason. And more facts will come on out. And hopefully, the people that have said some falsehoods will apologize to the community and apologize for putting certain members of our community in hell. And I hope it never happens again to anybody else in this city, ever again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? For the record, councilmember Sanchez and councilmember Ibarra has arrived.
Is it this one? Oh. Good evening, John Schollenberger, 7th Ward, City of San Bernardino. I'm here to support Dr. Treasurer Ortiz. I know you're telling the truth, and you have the receipts to prove it. What bothers me is this has done great damage to the city of San Bernardino's finest. The rank-and-file policemen, police officers that do the job every single day. The ones that are in there in the dust and the grime. They could leave tomorrow, but they don't. I talked to them at the celebration that we held for them up in Little League Field. They said, "We're here to stay." My cousin Mike Guile was a police lieutenant in this city from 1975 until he retired in 2006. He was a public servant. It's very disheartening to me because I can tell you that the San Bernardino Police Department changed my mind about policing when I moved here. I grew up in Riverside, and they had a very Gestapo-style policing model. This was a community policing model that I came to know. And they've been very helpful to me, but this has done great damage. But not only that, it's done damage to a woman who stood up and held people accountable. You assaulted her character, you assaulted her reputation, all based on lies to prop up Pennman, who was recalled. And for good reason. And the person that ran that recall, he didn't force anybody to do it. They did it because they knew it was the right thing to do. Dr. Ortiz, I stand with you, shoulder to shoulder, because you're a champion of truth. Fear not, God is with you. He's called you for such a time as this. Be steadfast, the community is with you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, mayor and council. Kimberly Calvin, good to see you back, City Attorney Carvalho. I want to come before you this evening to talk about both items on the agenda. But first, I'll start with the city manager interviews that have been taking place and the way that the council has directed themselves in calling staff to work on late Friday evenings and on a Sunday evening. I find that to be just definitely not fiscally sound. There was nothing that you could have, that could have waited till today, tomorrow, or the next day, anytime. So what you did, you need to very well be looking at how you have affected the city negatively. Also, we need to be reminded that current interim city manager, Mr. Gallardo, does and can be here until December, helping the city of San Bernardino move forward, providing the tasks that I'm sure that you gave him, as you should have, and being able to check off a box that we have accomplished something that will help us to be a city that is more attractive to a city manager of a caliber of which we would want here. That is definitely what's most important. And seeing that he is a local, a person that has grown up in this city, worked 34 years in the city of Brea, why would we not use that expertise and that knowledge? Why would we not rely on his ability to know this city inside and out? Because he lived here, he lives here, he has been born and raised here. But that only just makes sense to me, I suppose, that we would look for stability, that we would look for an opportunity again because we asked, and the community asked you as well in 2023, to pause, to allow us to become stable before we went out to recruit when we were not in position. And here you are, once again, faced with that same decision, faced with that same momentum of ignoring the city and what it is that they are trying and wanting you to hear. So, so much for surveys and asking the community about what they want. Secondly, I want to let everyone know today that I sat inside of a conversation with councilwoman Ortiz and the POA president, Mr. Loria, where Mr. Loria definitely admitted that there had been a retiree who had ran councilmember Calvin, I mean councilmember Ortiz through CLETS. And he said that in front of me, admitted it, gave her direction, asked what it was that she needed to do or should do next, said that they were going to be taking the endorsement of Mr. Pennman back, as they did. So I'm not sure as to why or what questions are here to be answered, but definitely I can state that I sat and had breakfast with Mr. Loria as he admitted that there had been an employee who had illegally run councilmember Ortiz through CLETS.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there more public comments?
So we have, we have public, additional public comments. It looks like we've had comments submitted multiple times. The way public comments is working for this meeting is that everything should be heard now so there isn't a separation between closed session and open session. So I'll call the additional speakers.
If council's mindful to that, I'd like to just go ahead. I believe there's two more, and then before we go into closed session, because we don't know how long we'll come out of that. Would you be okay to hear all the public comments? Okay, let's continue. Thank you, council. Yes, please. We don't have a public comment.
I could use mine.
Don't give yourself more time.
No, no, three minutes. Come on, you can do it. Three minutes? Yes?
Yes.
So, Isadora? Okay, good afternoon. I feel kind of claustrophobic in here. So I don't know why we're here, but it's okay. Anyways, I want to speak about the budget. You know, it's very important that we stayed in the black ink, you know, for too long. We were in the red. And that is the reason why I've been reaching out to the city manager, to the different councilmembers, to try to see how can we get more, more revenue to the city, okay? Because a lot of, a lot of people, they just think about the city paying for things, the government doing things. Well, there's not such a thing. We, we, the taxpayers, that's the one that pays for everything. So if we don't increase our revenue, well, that's why we have the city that we have. We don't have money, okay? And also, you know, everybody's talking about the issue about what is the urgency about the city manager? Well, I'm going to give you my opinion. What is the urgency for me, okay? I've been through this several times, and for example, it's been like, what, two years? Almost three years since I've been trying to do SB Food Fest? And every interim city manager has been telling me, "Just Mr. Ojeda, we're going to do SB Food Fest, but wait, wait." You know, there's a lot of more important things to do. Well, and after what, four, four interim? I'm still waiting. So I don't even bother no more. So I think I'll wait for the permanent to get, to get it going again. Because the people in the communities, you know, they liked it. I did it for almost three years, and they love it. The only reason we stopped is because of COVID. Otherwise, you know, we would have been doing it still. So that's the urgency. Plus, every new person that we hire, they come with their own ideas and whatever the last one is doing. Let's say Mr. Gallardo's having a great idea to do for the city, then the permanent decided that, oh, no, it's not a good idea. They're going to scrap it and then start over again. And then we're going to waste time, money, and effort. And that's the reason. And you know what? In my opinion, I think we have the worst form of government. This is the city manager, I mean, the CEO. Then we have owner by the role for the mayor, and then we need four councilmembers to dictate. It's so disorganized. I feel that we need to get back to the strong mayor form of government. That, I mean, for me, it's like, it's too many chiefs and no Indians. Everybody's like, no, me, no, me, me, me. And it's in fighting every time, every time. So come on, people, let's get to work. I mean, like, the other day, you guys gave out, what, grand for $18,000? I don't want to tell you how much I spent for almost five years that we did cleanups, but I picked up over 500 tons of trash from the city alleys and streets. See? Three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Hello, hello. That sounds about right, right? Great. My name is Eric Marquez, and it's a pleasure to speak before all of you today. This will be a more professional public comments than my previous one. For the councilmembers who assembled during the emergency session last time, we understand, well, the public unders, well, I'm not sure. But what you did was not illegal, not against any protocol, but it was not what the community wanted when it comes to having all their elected officials represent them. And you may have misunderstood what they may have said as corruption claims, which may or may not be true with certain members, removing cadets from the list of potential city managers. But we understand that you are trying to do your best, as hard as it may be for some of us to believe Fred does his best. And I hope you do choose the best city manager that will last and serve our city well. And that's the end of my public comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Natalia Saka. I am the regional policy advocate for the Coalition for Human Immigrant Rights, known as CHIRLA. Our office is based in San Bernardino City, serving the entire inland empire. We are dedicated to supporting the rights and well-being of immigrant and refugee communities. Today, I urge you to include immigrant communities in San Bernardino City's budget through three key investments. First, we ask the city to create a grant program to expand immigration legal services, especially for removal, defense, and asylum cases. Families are being torn apart simply because they lack access to representation. We also request funding for community education programs such as know-your-rights training, civic engagement initiatives that empower residents and foster community participation. Second, we call for immigrant inclusion in the design, implementation, and evaluation of all city programs, along with language and cultural access. Translation and interpretation services must be standard in every department and public meeting. Finally, on public safety, we ask for road repairs, better lighting, and cleaner neighborhoods. Poor infrastructure and dark streets increase the risk of accidents and crime while unclean public spaces impact community health. I will email you all the detailed proposal. And CHIRLA's policy team is ready to collaborate with the city of San Bernardino to move these efforts forwards. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yes, my name is Scott, and I was here last Friday. And I'm going to say something a little bit different than a lot of people up the podium. It is each individual elected official's responsibility to get here to the meeting or not get here. That being said, there is no requirement in the charter or anywhere else that a city councilperson or the mayor is required to attend a meeting. Life happens. That's why you have to have a quorum. There was not only a quorum, you had five people there. When the mayor is gone, the mayor pro tem, by the city charter, or basically California law, steps in and runs the meeting. Okay, no one individual as an elected official, including the mayor, out of respect, is so important that you can't have a meeting without them being there. That's the way state laws set up. So it's a non-issue. Now, on to the real thing I'm up here for. I've had the privilege and the pleasure of working with Eric in his community garden for the last several months. I am proud of the fact that San Bernardino has a community garden. However, like so many other things in San Bernardino, it is ignored and it has been neglected. The main common building, the refrigerators were from the '70s. I don't know, the microwave might be from the '80s. The building looks like it hasn't been touched since the '70s. And the irrigation system loses pressure, doesn't work. And I want to tell you something. You have a group of citizens that are proud enough that they're willing to put in hundreds of hours of volunteer time. Granted, they're harvesting their own crops, but they're engaged and they're involved. The least you can do is make sure they have water pressure, fix the irrigation system. And the roads, they're dirt roads, I get it, but their potholes are as bad as the city's. How hard is it for the city to pull in a city maintenance truck, drop some gravel into the holes, and call it a day? You have a jewel. Why are you treating it like it's a piece of plastic that you don't want? Put some money aside for the garden, fix the irrigation, and make it something that the residents can enjoy and be proud of. It's not a big-ticket item. It's not like rebuilding juvenile hall or anything like that. There are things in our city where people are willing to work, they're willing to put their time forward, and they're willing to be a part of it. At least give them the opportunity to be exact. Sandra, you know what I'm talking about. Sandra, several years ago, I was at the Rialto Community Garden. I invite any of you, I only have pictures of the Rialto Community Garden, but trust me, it's very obvious. I invite any of you elected officials, when Eric are down there, my phone number is available, call me. I'll come down. I'll do a tour, and I'll show you what they're faced with. Why not work with them? They're there, and they're working hard. Work with them. Give them something that they can actually use and not be frustrated with.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon. My name is Ivan Garcia. I'm a volunteer for the city of San Bernardino. Been here since 2018. I'm here to talk about the permanent city manager. I just want to say that I'll be the first volunteer to do a ride-along with the city manager. And I hope we ask specific questions. I'd like to know what that city manager, whoever's going to fill that position, what do they do to, out of their way, to beautify their city, or what's their background? So I hope we have good questions for the upcoming city manager. And please, please, tonight, make the best decision. And it's good to see all the city staff here. So many faces, but it would be nice also to see change in every department. Hopefully, the city manager can cut some of the habits that are happening in each, in some of the departments. Public works, response times to corrections, issues in the city. The permanent city manager is very important, like Luis Ojeda's mentioned. If we keep having interim managers, each manager, interim manager is going to come with his own ideas, and we're back to square one. So we're just wasting time throwing money down the drain. We can't afford that. We need a permanent city manager, someone that loves our city, and someone that's going to be impactful in this position. Again, like I mentioned, I'm willing to do a ride-along with the city manager. I'm also willing to volunteer, as a volunteer, to help out our city. And in regards to the budget tonight, I hope that CIP projects, budget is increased. I've still been waiting for my alley since 2019. Here we are in 2025. It's been six years. Hopefully, we have a bigger budget for street improvements, light fixtures, parks. And hopefully, the city manager can also hold CalChans accountable because there are a lot of our freeways in our city have overgrown weeds, graffiti, illegal dumping. And we just need to beautify our city. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers, Madam City Clerk? That concludes the speakers. Thank you so much. We're combining both into just one. Yes, that's it. Thank you so much. We will now convene into closed session at 5:55 PM. Could we begin with the staff's presentation?
Yes, Mayor Tran and members of the city council. We have three presenters today. We have myself, we have Jeannie Fortune, Fortune, our interim director of finance and management services, and Zueva Ruiz, our budget division manager. We're pleased to share with you the draft of the proposed fiscal year 25, 26 budget. With your concurrence, this will be a first of at least one or two additional budget workshops as we march towards a budget hearing and adoption of a budget prior to July 1, the start of the new fiscal year. I'm pleased to share with you a balanced budget projection for fiscal year 25, 26. And we will go as slow or as fast as you wish, and we are all here to answer questions you may have. As a reminder, the budget is a projection, is an expenditure projection and a point in time using all our best data sources and relying on actual historical revenue and expenditure information. With that, let me begin. So our workshop today will focus in on several items. An executive summary, our economic trends of national state and the county, our proposed 25, 26 revenue and expenditure projections, fund balance. And then we have public works to talk about the capital improvement program. And lastly, our fiscal year 25, 26 budget calendar. Can somebody move the slides forward, please? One more. Okay, that's fine. We'll go there. Our balanced budget, we have a balanced budget amidst a complex and uncertain landscape, economic landscape. The national, state, and local economies continue to face volatility and uncertainty. Our operational expenditure adjustments were decreased 5% to ensure fiscal sustainability and flexibility. So what we did is we asked departments to trim their operational budget, this year's budget, 5% as we move into the next fiscal year. We've also asked, don't you keep going, Tanya, keep going. No, you're too far. Backwards. Up there you go, prefer. That's good, right there. We have as part of the fiscal year 25, 26 highlights a proposed targeted non-safety hiring deferral to align with organizational priorities. What we believe is that vacancies in the organization are opportunities to review and determine need. It's also an opportunity for departments to look at vacancies in the organization and see if we can consolidate and make the department a right size, if you will. Zueva, you want to talk about our economic trends, please?
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. So as we go into, obviously, preparing the proposed budget that's being presented, it's important to, obviously, keep the economic landscape and some of those economic indicators in mind. Typically, what city manager's office and finance staff does is we take all of these economic indicators into consideration and apply it with a very careful lens as we're doing revenue projections, expenditure projections, and as we're going into those budget discussions with the city departments. So when we look at the national lens, we always try to zoom out and then try to zoom in so we can apply it to, like, real-life scenarios. And so when we look at the national economic trends in quarter 4 of 2024, the real GDP, which is the gross domestic product, was at a positive 2.4%. The data that's come out for quarter 1 of 2025 is currently at a negative 2.2%. So what this means nationally, it's just a slower growth in 2025, and it's primarily attributed to some of the federal fiscal policies. And this is just creating some uncertainty that can be seen in the market. Federal Reserve, the interest rates are held currently between 4.25% to 4.5%. So this is technically a percent drop from what was presented at mid-year. But while the lower rates encourage the borrowing, they do also signal just a slowdown in the economy. And then unemployment, so US, the US economy added about 220 jobs, but the unemployment rate at the national level holds at 4.2%. When we zoom in a little bit more into the state level, what's currently being proposed for the state budget, for the governor's budget, currently sits at $363 million surplus. The surplus only comes from a projected $7.1 billion drawdown from their reserves. So again, similar to the message that was communicated at mid-year, this, this use of their reserves and this state uncertainty as well in their budget just highlights the need to have strong local reserves to ensure that should there be any uncertainty at the state level, the city is fiscally sustainable and flexible to address those changes. Housing market, the prices show minimal growth. There are still high mortgage rates and economic uncertainties. Currently, in January 2020 through February of 2020- Currently, in January 2020 through February of 2025, the housing costs rose to about 82%, which rose more quickly than wages, which were currently at 24%. And then the trade and tariffs. I know, we all know about the current tariffs and trade struggles. And so this will typically lead into higher prices, reduced spending, and then lower sales tax revenue. And that's really how we try to apply this lens is just being very conservative, knowing what is going on in the economic landscape. And then we zoom in a little bit more to the San Bernardino County. So the county unemployment rates currently sits at 5%. Good news for the county because this does sit lower than the state percent, which is 5.3%. Housing affordability, so mortgage payments currently consume about rounded 68% of people's per capita income. What this means for the city is there is limited disposable income and directly with a city like ours, we are highly dependent on sales tax revenue. And so again, this is the conservative lens that the city is taking when we're doing these projections. And then the inland empire CPI, which is inflation. In March of 2024, it stood at 4.3%. A year later, CPI is at 2.5% in March of 2025. So while inflation is easing, the costs for essential goods and services remain high. And then with the tariffs and trade struggles, we can also kind of see this in the expenditure realm where we're going to see those costs rise. So then we go into our proposed 26 revenues. So here we have a comparison off to the right-hand side. So this is percentage change from projected actuals. And so you see the total that was projected at mid-year for '25 is 222.6 million. And what we're projecting in fiscal year '26, the proposed is 22.8.2 million. And so this is a moderate 2.5% increase. This is just kind of visually what we want to represent. So our largest revenue sources are again Measure S, sales tax and sales and use tax. Those are our largest percentages of those, of that pie graph. And then we also see UUT, utility users tax, and then the property tax in lieu of VLF. Those are our major revenue categories for the city. Some of the revenue decreases that are being seen is slight decrease in sales tax. So about 74, 7400, yes, 740,000. Investment income is decreasing by about 1.6 million. Intergovernmental is going down about 490,000. And then charges for services, about 450,000. However, we are also seeing increases. And so utility user tax is increasing about 1.5 million. Miscellaneous is going up about 2 million. Use of money and property is 1.5 million. And then Measure S is going up approximately close to 2 million. The thing I do want to highlight with Measure S, we did see a slight decrease in sales tax, but there is an increase in Measure S. And this is typically seen because Measure S is more of a stable local sales activity and we see the full 1% local return to the city as opposed to the sales tax. And one, one thing staff and city manager's office really wants to highlight is the, the growth that we're seeing in the proposed 26 revenue is, it, it does acknowledge the uncertainty we're seeing, the volatility that we're seeing in the market. But these are based on reliable local trends that we're seeing. They are conservative assumptions. And the $6 million growth that we're seeing is a sustainable recovery. We're not anticipating temporary spikes in these, in this forecast. And then the forecast does ensure that the city's fiscal health can be protected against some external factors. And then I'll hand it over to Jeannie.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protown, City Council. Jeannie Fortune with the Finance Department. As Zueva mentioned, we will continue with the budget presentation. So we did a lot of research to make sure that when we do project, as the city manager mentioned, these are estimates, these are projections. So we looked to economic experts. Now, they are projecting that California will have a steady growth between 2% and 3%. So to be easy, we assumed 2.5%, right in between. They are calling it a gradual slowdown, not a recession. So what city departments have done was to proactively align our operations with current economic trends. So if Zueva can go back to the revenue, your revenue one? No, your revenue chart? No. So if you all look at the bottom line, the first two are actuals. We actually went from receiving 219 million to 232 million. Now, when we project prior to this recession, we were doing between 5% and 6% because that was what the trend was. So as you can see, we did try to adopt a 236, but we did come to council a month, a month and a half ago to say, we're going to have to go down. So we are projecting this year to end at 222. So to be conservative, our projections for revenues are only 2.5%. So when we go back to the expenditures, so our job is to try to realign our expenditures with that projected revenue. So to align with that projected revenue, departments have identified roughly 10.7 million in budget for operational, operational adjustments, while still ensuring continued delivery of essential city services. However, at the same time, even if we are doing the cut, there are certain things that we have to increase and we have to pay. And these are the big ones. So those step advances for employees who are eligible, rising retirement contributions, health benefits. And our biggest one is really the growth in unfunded accrued liability. And that is provided by CalPERS prior to the beginning of the budget year. So that's a number we already knew. We already known today, yeah, trying to move her forward. So what we're trying to do is to align ourselves again with that projected revenue. So what we did is we have, all we did was status quo budget. We were rolling the original adopted budget for the current year, proposing six-month targeted non-safety hiring deferral to align with that budget. So that six-month hiring deferral is estimated to be 8.1 million. It should, city council agree that we not hire for the first six months. And we will, of course, monitor the fiscal conditions. And since our mid-year is normally late in the day, we are committing to providing quarterly reports to council for the following year so that you are aware if there is a drastic change, whether it's negative or positive, then we will come sooner or we will come in between those quarterly to make sure that you are, you are updated. And like I said, if revenue strengthens, we'll return to council to say if we could lift that hiring deferral or if it continues to decrease, then we're going to request to extend that. Instead of six months, it might be eight months or 10 months as we monitor closely. So here now are total expenditures again. And again, if we look at the bottom line, so the third column was our adopted budget at 237 million. As you can see, our projection is at 215 only. Please bear in mind, the 215 million projection is based on the number of existing filled positions that we have. But when we budget for the next year, we budget for all authorized positions. So assuming we currently have a vacancy of, let's say, 150 today, 150 vacancies, the 215 is based on 800, right? 800 filled positions. But the proposed 228 is based on authorized 960. That's why we are requesting a six-month deferral on those vacancies to achieve that 8 million in savings. So when we end at 228, 182, 811, it's a balanced budget because that's what, what our revenue projections are, conservative as they may be. So then, just to reiterate, and we discuss our fund balance. As we had just mentioned, the operating budget, we are not requesting or using any, any, any reserves. For our capital projects, we are going to strategize to use the CIP reserve or the Measure S capital projects reserve that we have set aside for this purpose. And Public Works will present those projects in detail right after my presentation. So again, we are showing, you know, this is the 20-year, I guess, our fund, fund, fund balance history. I like it because it does give a story. So we are on the trajectory. We are going in the right direction. And on the next slide, what we did was I shortened it to 10 years and we're always going to add the proposed at the end. So if you notice that the proposed, the revenues are higher than expense, but this is again requesting the use of CIP reserves for CIP projects. What I'd like to note, yeah, both, well, either one, but if you notice at the bottom, the recommended government finance officers association reserve is 17%. Our Munich code states our minimum requirement should be 25%. But what I wanted to show council and the community for the last five years, our reserve has been, been between 75 and almost 90%, yeah, of our revenues. So it is going to drop down to 75. But I think that's a good thing, as Public Works will explain, because we're going to reinvest our reserves into the community. Yeah, that's what I wanted to show. So again, here is our fund balance. And again, if you see revenue, operating revenue, less operating expense were balanced. And the only request that we are doing for the proposed budget is the use of, again, designated CIP reserves of 23.7 million. Even with that, our reserves are still at the bottom, 75%, not 25%, not 50. Even with the use of CIP reserves, we will be at 75%. If I remember Mr. Charette saying, yeah, let's try to increase the revenues, let, yet, let's use what we have to enhance the quality of life for the community. So is there any questions? If not, we are going to have Public Works, is that right? Yes, Public Works do their CIP presentation.
I think we're going to hold off questions till the end, right? Or, I mean, does council, are you good to?
Real quick, for the proposed six-month targeted non-safety, so is that because we're working in conjunction with the class and comp study to consolidate what needs to be consolidated and give you time to do that?
No, it doesn't have anything to do with the class and comp study. So it's not like an organizational assessment. The class and comp study is specific to what the positions are. Are they properly classified? And then what are they, how do they stack up against the market? So it's different than that. What we're looking at is all the vacant positions to kind of put them on hold, put them on pause for the six months. Anything that becomes vacant while we're doing this, so let's just say we have 100 positions, if something becomes vacant, there will be an assessment done to determine whether or not that position is critical and it needs to be filled. So that's how we will keep track of that process.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we're going to keep proceeding. Thank you, Jeannie. That was a great presentation and very good info. We'll go proceed to the CIP.
How do you, how do you move it forward? Or next here? Okay. And then he keep hitting this one here and every time you have to do this? Can you help me with that? Yeah, okay, thanks. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Azam, City Engineer. It's a pleasure here presenting you with the CIP program and update on some of the exciting projects we have in the city. Next slide.
We're excited too.
Yeah, okay. I just want to spend a few minutes to discuss the process when we deliver projects. We go through the planning, design, and construction. And then that process is divided into a workflow. The one I want to concentrate on is design and construction. Why a project takes longer? It takes up to four years to deliver a project. Basically, in design, the first two are straightforward workflow process. But during design, what we do is we go through 30, 60, and 100% plan submittal. And then we get stuck sometimes on environmental clearances. The environmental clearances during design is we have endangered species like the kangaroo rats, like the lily flowers. And then we have to mitigate on how we're going to impact these endangered species. And the other one is the right-of-way acquisition. Sometimes when we do street widening projects, we have to go through a process where we have to acquire land to widen the, the intersections and the street segments that we work on. And the, the, the third one is the, basically, the utility conflicts. Utility conflicts sometimes will delay the project big time. And I will explain that to you on a project that we're, we have in utility conflicts with when I get to that slide. But basically, like SE utilities, water conflicts and so forth. So that basically why that process takes from one to four years. And then when we get to construction, then you're going to encounter unforeseen conditions. You're going to have material price escalations. You're going to go into contract performance issues. And then you're going to go into change orders where we have to come back sometimes to city council to request additional funding. So this is capital project by, by phase. Basically, we're proposing part of the 2526 CIP program, 42 new proposed projects, 43, we have 43 in planning and then we have 40 in design and we have 34 in construction. This is capital project by phase, just a synopsis of what we have completed in the last couple of years. As you can see, some of the major projects and we achieved a lot during the last couple of years, which is one of them is the demolition of the Carousel Mall, the Second Street Bridge, which was a significant improvement in the city. And then the two traffic signal upgrades, which is at 224 signalized intersections. And then the advanced dilemma project. And the lower list is the Kendall Drive slope stabilization, which was an issue for years where the hill was eroding. And then we put a slope stabilization process at that location. And then the Sierra Way improvement, that's a street improvement. That's a paving project that extended from 9th to 30th along that stretch of the roadway. So the existing capital project by category, this to give you a synopsis on what we have existing currently, Public Works is working on. Buildings, 17 projects, Parks and Recs, 29, Storm and Rain, 12, street projects, 39, and Traffic Control, 20 projects. This is funding. This is existing funding that we're currently working on. It's 37.5 million for Parks and Recreation, 15.4 million for Storm and Rain, Streets is 56.8 million, Traffic Control is 9.4, and then General Building is 43.8 million. So this is basically the summary of the existing project funding needs. Basically, Streets is 5.6 million, Traffic Control, .5 million, and then Parks and Recreation is 2 million, Storm and Rain is 8 million. So we need to continue working on these existing projects, approximately 16.4 million needed for existing projects. And that will be 8 million from Measure S and 8.4 million from special funds. The definition of special funds is develop impact funds, Measure I, and then SB1, which is our MRA also. So we're now on the proposed project category that we're proposing for '25, '26, basically. 11 street projects, 10 traffic control projects, general building, 14 projects, Parks and Recs, five projects, and Storm and Rain, two projects. For a total amount of 42 proposed projects for '25, '26. This slide here will define the, the funding needs that we need to move these projects forward as far as funding. 22.6 for Streets. 22.6 for streets, 22.6 million. Storm drain is .35 million. Parks and recs, 2.1 million. General building, 3.3 million. And traffic control, 1.2 million. So our needs for 25-26 for proposed projects is 29.58 total in proposed project funding, broken down into 13.3 million from Measure S, and then 16.15 from special funds. Capital project budget summary, existing CIP funds is 162.9 million, 16.4 needed for existing projects, as I explained in the previous slides, 29.6 million proposed CIP projects for a total CIP budget of 209, 208.9 million. So I'm going to go and update on all the, not all the projects that we have currently in Public Works. Some of these slides are exciting to talk about tonight. One of them is the California Theater. We're going to shut down the theater on June 2nd for major renovation, and we're going to open the theater on September 30th. So four months' process where we're going to renovate the theater for the community to enjoy once we complete that project. Completion, estimated completion date is fall of 2025. Next one is an animal shelter renovation project. This is what we're going to label as Phase 2. We're going to open bids next week for the 12 modular buildings that we have. And then we are going to, we're preparing a staff report to, for an award to the city council on May 21st. And the project will be completed in the fall of 2025. Roosevelt Ball Rehab, this is an ongoing project in design, and they were expecting the project completion in the winter of 2026. Spiker Park East Side Skate Park, we're ahead of schedule, says at the bottom, May 2025, but actually, the construction was completed last week. So we're excited about that project, and I guess Jeff and the staff is working on doing, you know, ruin cutting ceremony for the park, for this project. Nicholson Park Improvements, a lot of projects in that area, and that's one of them, is the Nicholson Park Improvements. We're expecting for completion summer 2025. We started construction about a month, month and a half ago, and we're excited about that project, too. If you combine this project with the one next door, which is, we're doing a ball field lighting project for a multipurpose field, which is soccer, combination of soccer and football, and there was the skate park, and then you have the soccer fields on the north side of Pacific, east of Arden. We're going to establish San Bernardino as a regional destination for sporting events in the Northern Empire. Second Lake Park Improvements, as you know, we did the big celebration for breaking the ground at that location. This project is going to take about a year to complete, and we're expecting to complete construction in 2020, spring 2026. I think I was ahead of myself, but this is the Spiker Ball Field Improvements also, combination with the previous slide that I showed you earlier. So we shift focus from parks into improving existing infrastructure. We, I hear a lot during council sessions and comments, we're building them, but we're not maintaining them. So this is a project where we're going to maintain the existing and eliminate flooding in the city. This is, this project had been going on for a while, and the reason it's delayed is the initial consultant who worked on the design passed away. So we're going to bring staff report to the city council next month to use the existing staff working on the design to continue working on the design instead of going through an RFP process. So I prefer to hire the same company that has been working on the design for the last couple of years instead of bringing a new design firm for this project. So estimated project completion is fall of 2025. And then part of the funding we're requesting also is use some funding for construction for this project, for Measure S. Myers Creek Focus Drainage Study, that's a study that's been going on for a while. We'll be completing that one in the summer of 2025. That's to address the flooding issues that we have on the north side of the city. Same thing with the Mount Vernon Storm Rain Project. We're expecting to complete that in 2025. We're in the engineering phase of it, and that's another storm rain project that we're pursuing aggressively. Street Rehab, 21 locations. If you remember, a year and a half ago, we came to the city council, we rejected the bids, and then because the bids, I think, came out at 15 million for 21 locations, so we scoped it, we brought it back, and then we awarded, we have a budget of 8.9. We're ahead, we're within budget, and the project is completed for 20 street segment The Payment Management Plan, two weeks ago, you saw the presentation by Nichols Consulting, and we're excited about that plan because this is the plan, this is going to be the plan that we're going to be using in addressing all the pavement issues in the city and how we prioritize pavement projects from this point on. Last year, we called it the Parks Year. This year, I'm going to call it Street Payment Year. So I'm going to tackle pavement as quickly as possible with the resources that we have. So I'm requesting approximately, this is the proposed budget, 20 million, 10 million, I think, is coming up from Measure S. And then 10 billion, we're going to be using different combinations of our MRA and gas tax funding. And this will be based at, we're going to approximately 50 locations, initial assessment, but those locations will be based on the upcoming payment management plan. We're going to start using that payment management plan in order to assess these 50 locations to move forward. That's why, in the first place, we developed that plan, or it will be developed at that State Highway to 15, University Parkway, I call it the Diamond Diversion Interchange, DDI. This is one exciting project that is going to put the city of San Bernardino on the map in transportation enhancement and improvements. This will be the second in the state of California DDI project that will address all the issues that we have with Cal State and then all the retail establishments we have on the University Parkway between the freeway and the on-ramp, on-ramp at that location. So estimated project completion is fall of 2025. And Stage 1B, and I think it was implemented last week, which is going to be in place for a while because we reduced the lanes now. I don't know if you passed by the location, the lanes are reduced, so you're going to encounter some congestion for a while. And then we're going to move forward with each stage, and each stage will be, you'll have issues with it, but we're going to work in addressing and mitigating them through social media. We'll work with Jeff in posting alerts on the website and so forth, make sure that people avoid this area during the construction period. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Okay. I don't know if I kept this slide to the end, but not, I should kept this slide to the end, but this is the Mount Vernon Bridge Replacement Project. Mark your calendars, August 23rd, the project will be completed. So, big celebration for the city. I think we're excited about this. All the decks been poured. You're going to see some shifting in the work now to the off-site locations, the Second Mount Vernon and Kingman Mount Vernon. We going to also do Kingman between Mount Vernon to Cabrera. We're going to put the landscape on the south side of the street where the BNSF facility is with some landscape. So finally, after five years, I think we started on this one in 2019, actual construction started in 2020, and then here we are, 2025, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. So I think this is a big celebration for the city, and we're going to make a big bank.
I believe they're going to close the road before they open it, right? To have a celebration on the road? I think.
We should, we should.
The CTA wanted to do that. So yes, we should.
We should, we should, yeah. And the last couple of slides, I have the University Parkway Landscape Phase 2. Remember I mentioned earlier that what are the issues that we have when we do design? The delay on this project is underneath the roadway between 16th and baseline, we have 108-inch water line, state supply to Southern California. To get a permit for that one is a pain, going through the permitting process, going through the plan review multiple times. We're on the third review on this project, and we just submitted the plans this week to the Department of Water Resources. So we'll see how that works, but if, we probably need help at a higher up to make a few phone calls to help us out navigate and expedite the review of the plans. Like I said, these are the 100% plans. There's nothing left on them, just have to go through the permitting process, and then we're ready to start the landscape on this project. This is Phase 2, what I call Phase 2. The Cross Street Bridge, one of many bridges that we have in the city, we're attacking them aggressively and making sure we don't have deficient bridges like we did with the Second Street Bridge, the Cross Street Bridge. And then unfortunately, we applied for a grant through the Bridge Investment Program in the amount of 676,000. That grant is on hold. We're not, we can't move forward. It's been held by the feds. They're going to assess how they're going to award this grant to us, including the other one mayor is the 5.2 million that we have received for five locations. That's on hold, too. We can't move forward until we get approval moving forward. So, but anyway, Cross Street Bridge will, moving very well on this project, we deliver the project in 20, in the summer of 2025. And so once we finish this project, we're going to thank the Fairfax Elementary School by restoring the playground, upgrade some of the playground equipment, do a slur seal on the onsite, and then pave the streets within the neighborhood on Fairfax Drive because those streets have been neglected for a long period of time. And then we close the gate on 17th, and then we turn the project back to the community. Last slide, basically, it's not only CIP projects, we work on non-CIP inter-jurisdictional projects. And there's a couple of them here worthy mentioning is everybody's talking about paving. Foothill, Route 66, between Pepper and the I-215 Improvement Project, summer of 2025, will be paved, sidewalk, curb and gutter. They're going to widen two bridges over the channel, and it's going to extend all the way from Pepper to the 215, and then you're going to have beautiful pavement, which we're going to tie in at Mount Vernon at 5th. So once you go south on Mount Vernon, you're going to have pavement from 5th on Mount Vernon all the way to Rialto. So all that will tie in with the. Yeah, so.
The happiness of the residents and the council. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. The other one is the 30th. I hear a lot of comments, people coming into our city and why we don't have beautiful streets. Caltrans is working on a project on Waterman from 30th to 40th. They're going to start construction in the fall of 2025. We're completing the improvements at the 210 Waterman currently in construction. And then one of the 50 locations I'm going to tackle is, I'm going to pave the I-210 Eastbound Off from On Waterman all the way to Highland. So you go north, you go south, you enter beautiful paved roadways in our city. Yeah.
They're beautiful.
Yeah.
Happy we are all together. This is like heaven.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. The other two projects, I'm emotional when I talk about CIP projects, sorry. Just, yeah. Two worthy projects, Third, the Rosa de Victoria Street Improvements and IVDA projects. We reviewed the plans, and I'm expecting to go to construction in spring 2026. Third and Sterling, that's the T intersection at that location, they also, they're going to have an opening to provide access to the airport, and then spring 2026. Also, we're working with the city of Highland on Victoria from 6th to 3rd. We might come back in the future to request funding for street improvements. You're going to have full roadway with two lanes northbound, two lanes southbound along that stretch. And then the I-210 at Victoria Interchange Project is, that's to address the issues that you have with the casino currently at Arden. When you exited the Eastbound Off, you can see how congested that location. So this is a long and tedious process. They're in the project approval, environmental determination step. They completed the project study report, project initiation. So this is the next step, and then after this step, they have to go and present this for funding so they can build the best alternative for this location. On the CIP, it's not on the PowerPoint presentation, but also what I'm going to be doing, I'm going through that same process for two interchangeings in the city, and I have a meeting with SBCTA in the next couple of weeks. The I-215 on Palm, we're going to go through that same process so we can put the stamp now and move forward with it. And the other one is the I-210 at the Rosa, which is a phase improvement at that location.
Is that it, Azam?
That's it.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, before we continue, because I want to acknowledge that per resolution 2024-029, council, we need, I need council approval for us to continue past 10, so if we could just.
Move to approve.
There's the motion. Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barra?
Yes.
Mayor Protim?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Canas?
Yes.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Presounding yes, because all these beautiful news we're getting. Keep it going.
Wonderful. Well, Mayor, I want to just, before we get into the budget calendar really quick, I want to just thank Azam and Lynn. As you can tell, they are truly committed to the amount of investment that the city is going to see in the coming year. It's the most money ever appropriated to our capital improvement program, and project delivery is going to be something that we all should be very proud of. So I want to thank them for their work in this area. On the budget calendar, we have identified, obviously, today is a day for the first salvo of iteration on the budget workshop. We'd like to, before we finish tonight, I know you're going to have questions and want some additional information, schedule a second budget workshop prior to us adopting the budget later on this fiscal year. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. And council, let's schedule the meeting if we can, just look at our calendars, because I think this is important.
Sure.
To keep going, if that's okay. Can we look at our calendars right now, see if we can identify some dates?
And also be cognizant of the time staff is going to need to put together. 100%. We think we need two weeks out because there's some additional information we want to share with you in terms of line item operational expenses.
I'm thinking Wednesday, the 29th, or the 28th, 29th.
Week of May 19th?
I was thinking the last week of May.
What do you think, Jeanne and Zoya? I want the week of the.
Are we looking before the May 21st, council? If we could have some dates?
Which one?
Is the May 14th enough time? May 14th?
We want another week?
May 14th, we have the IVDA.
We need another week.
Could we? Because we're also, while we're on that note, I think most of the council is hoping for a pretty thorough budget presentation, like we had. The one I referred to that Councilmember Charette and Councilmember Figaro will remember as a reference point is the budget from 2021, 2022. So, you know, account numbers, as well as the account name or a description of the account, and then the amounts. That'll give us a pretty good description, so.
That'd be great. If we could do it either on the 20th or the 22nd?
Because.
After the council meeting, how about the 22nd, 5:30?
Well, but you have the May 21st to adopt.
We can wait for the next meeting.
We can move it? Okay.
We can do first meeting in June.
May 22nd, does that work for everyone?
5:30?
That works for me.
That works for me. May 22nd, Thursday, for the next budget meeting, and then for the following regular norm, council meeting will adopt. First meeting in June.
Ignore that last. May 22nd?
May 22nd.
I know.
I'm hearing yes from everyone. Any no's?
No.
May 22nd. 5:30?
Yes, ma'am.
Works for everyone, 5:30?
Do you have any?
Thank you, council.
Does council have any questions specific for staff at this point?
Any questions?
Yes, I see there's questions, yes.
I mean, it's not really quite, I just want to say thank you. Like, this is, well, one, I want to thank my colleagues for putting the money aside, for being really fiscally conservative over these last, you know, how many years. It's been really important, especially coming through COVID, so that's cool. And just the one thing, along with the Waterman Corridor, which is, oh, so, I'm just so happy, will that also include the? that also include the landscaping on the side, like the sidewalks?
Okay, it's not on this slide, but I requested part of the CIP submission, money for landscaping. I'm hoping to go into a co-op agreement with the state to landscape both sides of Waterman from 30th all the way to 40th.
You're awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Landscape is very important for all of us. Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Councilmember Barra?
Oh, yeah. Just want to make sure that the budget presentation will include previous year, actuals, proposed, all that, and then maybe whatever the adjustment amount is as a percentage so we can weigh all our options. I know that we're having to defer some hires and move numbers around. So I just want to make sure we're all familiar with it and we can get our, you know, as much buy-in as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, council. Good comment. Councilmember Barra?
I just want to thank our public works and engineer departments because a lot of these projects, whether people in the audience realize or not, it's been years of us trying to fund, and we were always on a limited budget, trying to get out of bankruptcy since I've been on, and seeing how our city is finally moving forward with these projects. The example is Nicholson Park. Before I was even elected, I toured the park with a community member who's already passed, and her passion was to see that park fixed. And I think we're going to do her justice. Ms. Charlie Jacobs, I know you're watching our city, and I hope you're proud for the work that our staff and our city is doing. This requires, just so the public knows, it's a commitment that we make as legislators of how much money we can allocate to all these parks based on the needs of the city. And I cannot thank you enough, especially with Cross Street Bridge. When I first came on board, that was my biggest concern, that bridge. And if we can ask the county, maybe they can help us because it is along a water channel. It was very unsafe. So I think it was two years ago when it was closed abruptly. And I thank, I thank you guys for thinking of Fairfax Elementary School because they have been there for the city, and it's our turn to get back to them. So thank you so much for all the work you're doing. And the Bridge Improvement Program, thank you for applying for it. And if there's anything that we can do when we go to Washington, DC, let us know. And we'll talk to, is it Congressman Aguilar, to see if he can try to get some funds in there approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, again, staff, wow, 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 fiscally healthy and projects on, we're rocking and rolling, so this is wonderful. Yes.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can thank the team behind me. They've worked really hard on being mindful of our budget, being cognizant of how we spend our money, and it shows based on what we're presenting to you today. And a lot of the agencies can't say that, you know, the headline news of LA, what their $11 billion problem, 1,500 layoffs, we don't have that here. We have people here behind me that are very smart. They know how to spend their money and are mindful, as I said, of how our resources get expended, and we're proud of bringing you a balanced budget this fiscal year. So thank you.
That's music to our ears, balanced budget. No, if there's no other comments, we are going to adjourn, right? I think that's all of it. That's all the agenda. Again, thank you, council.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Just real quick, for anybody that's still awake, tomorrow is Nax Plant Sale at Wildwood Park, so if you can make it, please show up.
That's right. Thank you. Okay, the meeting's adjourned at 9:42 PM. The next joint regular meeting of the mayor and city council, and the mayor and city council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, and the mayor and city council acting as the San Bernardino City Housing Authority, and mayor and city council of the city of San Bernardino acting as the San Bernardino Joint Powers Finance Authority, will adjourn to a special meeting to be held on May 7th at the Feltime Central Library located at 555 West 6th Street, San Bernardino, California, 92410. Close session will begin at 4:00 PM, open session will begin at 5:00. Actually, is this a regular, the next is the regular council meeting, not special meeting?
Right.
And so close session's at 4:00, and the regular meeting starts at 5:30? Is that correct?
At 5:00.
At 5:00? Okay, just want to make sure. All right, meeting's adjourned, everyone. Get home safely.[1790.88]